Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Candidate Forum for Edina City Council. My name is Debbie McNeil, and I'm the Acting President of the League of Women Voters Edina, which is the sponsor of tonight's forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization. We encourage informed and active participation by citizens in their government. While the League does studies and takes positions on issues, we don't endorse any candidates or political parties. The views expressed tonight will be those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters, and the fact that we're holding this forum is not intended as an endorsement of any of the candidates. It's now my pleasure to introduce to you the moderator for tonight's forum, Margaret Berg of the League of Women Voters Minneapolis.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here, and before we get started, I will ask all of you to take out your cellphones and turn it off if you've got one. The purpose of this evening's forum is to provide an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss issues that are important to you. We will try to cover as many issues as possible in the time we have. If questions are not addressed tonight, I would encourage you to seek out the candidates directly or check out their websites. They probably all have websites. All the candidates who filed for office and who will be on the November 4 ballot were invited to this forum tonight, and we have five of those, the seven. I'd now like to explain the rules and format of tonight's forum. Speaking order was assigned before the forum and will rotate with each question. We've got, I've got a little grid to make it really mixed up, so you won't be able to tell who's next. Each candidate will have one minute to make an opening statement and one minute to answer a question sent out in advance. Candidates will then have one minute to answer each question submitted by the audience and one minute to make a closing statement. This forum will include a lightning round at some point at which each candidate will be asked a different question, drawn at random, out of a hat, and they will be asked to give a brief, one-sentence answer. So theoretically, they're uncomplicated questions. A League volunteer will time candidate responses, they're up here in the front row, and indicate to candidates when they have 30 seconds remaining and when they must stop. Audience questions must be in writing and handed to a volunteer who is wearing a League button, and they are around the edges, and these are our question orders. I will ask all the questions. The League of Women Voters, Edina, determines which questions will be asked and attempts, in good faith, to cover the topics of interest indicated by the submitted audience questions. All written questions become the property of the League of Women Voters of Edina. This forum is being videotaped, and so we ask you to please hold applause till the end of the forum. It will give us a chance to cover more questions. So I will introduce you to your candidates for city council in alphabetical order, and then they are going to go down the line with their opening statements and come back at the end. So on the ballot are Thomas Bliss, who is not with us tonight, Jennifer Janovi, who is, I guess you've got the names up in front, Blake Johnson, who is not with us tonight, Josh Sprague, Kevin Staunton, Kia Steele, and Bob Stewart. I presume you want to be Bob?
Yes.
Okay. So then let's start with the one-minute opening statements, and we'll start with Bob Stewart.
I'm Bob Stewart. I love Edina. I have lived here for 37 years and want the best for this community. Edina has a tradition of excellence and quality, so it's important that we elect our very best to the city council. There's a consistent theme of service in my life. I've served in the United States Peace Corps as a coach in Edina sports programs for basketball, soccer, fast pitch softball, lacrosse, and football. I've served on many community boards, such as the Edina Education Fund, Youth Frontiers, and the Edina Athletic Boosters. My deep business acumen is unique among the candidates here. I'm a CPA, I'm an attorney, I'm a business expert and advisor. I've worked for Pricewaterhouse, Frederickson &amp; Byron, and Cargill. I've also served on over 15 business and nonprofit boards of directors. I believe my experience of setting strategy and providing direction and guidance to businesses has prepared me well to serve on city council, which provides direction and guidance to the city management. I look forward to giving back to this community by serving on city council. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Janovi.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters Edina for hosting this forum and to everyone here for coming tonight and taking an interest in what we have to say. As a resident for 20 years, I've been active in community and civic issues. In 2004, I co-founded the Morningside Neighborhood Association. One of the first things we did was advocate against the potential use of eminent domain at 44th and France. In 2008, I worked to start the organics recycling program, and recently I worked to develop recommendations for construction management and residential zoning code. In 2010, after doing a League of Women Voters study, I discovered the city wasn't publishing its full budget, so I advocated for the full budget to be published. That happened in 2011, and we've had that financial transparency ever since. I serve on the Transportation Commission and on the Met Council's Transportation Advisory Board. I have a broad experience and a strong commitment to public service and to our city and look forward to answering your questions tonight.
Thank you. Josh Sprague is next.
And thank you to the League and everyone in attendance this evening. My name's Josh Sprague, and I'm just finishing up my first four-year term as Edina City Council member. I live in the Cornelia neighborhood with my wife Kelly and our four children, all of whom attend Edina Public Schools. In addition to my council service, I'm a board member of the Rotary Club of Edina, a former board member and chair of the Southdale YMCA, an Edina Chamber of Commerce member and business ambassador, a volunteer at Cornelia and Normandale Elementary Schools, and a coach for the Edina Hockey and Soccer Associations. Four years ago when I came before you, I never understood the enormity of the decisions that we as a council, as a community, would have to make to move Edina forward. I heard from you, hundreds of phone calls, emails, letters, and meetings, and I listened to you, and somewhere buried beneath our differences, we found consensus. Tonight, I'm asking for your input again. Let's talk, and let's honor Edina's longstanding tradition of working together in partnership to build the best future possible. Thank you.
Kevin Staunton is up next.
Thank you. Although I have lived in Edina for 16 years, my history in our community goes back much farther. In 1982, shortly after graduating from college, I volunteered as a coach for the Edina Baseball Association. It was a great introduction to Edina that culminated in a national championship in 1983. Fifteen years later, my wife Maria and I moved to Edina, two days before my youngest son Will was born and two weeks before my oldest son Jack started kindergarten. Today, Will is driving, and Jack is almost finished with college. I've had the privilege of being involved in our community in all kinds of ways. I've coached baseball, volunteered in our schools, served as president of the Highlands PTA, and for the last nine years, I've served as a member of the Edina Planning Commission, where I am now chair. I understand our community from many perspectives and hope you'll give me the chance to utilize that understanding as a member of the city council for the next four years.
Thank you. Kia Steele.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, and thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you to those watching online or on TV. My name is Kia Steele. I'm a lifelong Edina resident. I grew up in the Concorde neighborhood. I have worked with the League of Women Voters, volunteered over the last nine years, and it has instilled values of transparency and helping Edina residents become active and informed participants in their city government. Currently, I work at the University of Minnesota in the Office of Government and Community Relations, and I'm responsible for looking at all state legislative proposals and analyzing their fiscal and policy impacts on all five campuses. I also studied public policy at the Humphrey School of Public Affairs, emphasizing in strategic planning. I hope to use my skills in strategic planning and financial analysis on the city council, and I have done so the past six years on the Edina Park Board. I hope to work with you to improve the quality of life in Edina while keeping taxes low. Thank you.
All right. The following question was sent out in advance, so we're going to do that next. Each candidate will have one minute to respond, and this is the question. What is your opinion of new housing developments that add density to the city? The first person I'm going to call on is Kevin Staunton.
Thank you. It's true that we've had new residential development underway in the Southdale area, and more is on the horizon. It's important to note that these developments are market-driven. The city has not provided any incentives to the projects. Property owners see a demand for new development and are investing to meet that demand. It's not surprising that people want to live in our community. We all know it's a great place to live. It's also not surprised that residential development is happening in the Southdale area. Our 2008 comprehensive plan contemplated just that. As we evaluate future requests for residential development in the Southdale area, we need to make sure that these and other developments provide benefit, not just burden, to our community. To that end, I will be working with my fellow planning commissioners to initiate a process like others we have pursued in recent years to engage key stakeholders in our community in a dialogue that can identify ways to ensure that continued residential development in the Southdale area proceeds in a way that is successful both for the development community and for our residents.
All right. I'm going to call on Josh Sprague next.
Thank you. All the new housing developments have been reviewed with our current zoning provisions. However, we do not have the right planning tools in place to manage the current pace of growth. We need to take it back to the essential question. How do we want to live, work, and play? Most of us would agree that we want places that foster a strong sense of community, that are active, safe, vital, vibrant, intergenerational, interconnected spaces. The book The Geography of Nowhere talks about the enormous economic, social, and emotional costs we've paid for car-centered suburban development. This is not the direction we want to be headed in. Instead, all development should create a strong sense of place and be human-scale. How can we do that here in Edina? Let's start by creating an overlay district for places like Greater Southdale, in which we set those goals for developers and then enforce them. Adherence to a livable, walkable, sustainable community vision will provide continuum of care housing for seniors and an attractive, affordable community for families and young people. I've already talked to the city planner about an overlay district, and we'll bring it forward at our next council meeting. Thank you.
Jennifer Janovi.
Okay. Thank you for the question. When City Hall talks about new development, the focus is on the benefits, the increase in tax base. When residents get concerned about development, the focus is on what it will cost, not the developer, but us. And how will it affect traffic? Do we have the infrastructure capacity to handle it? How will it change the community? And how will it affect our property values? So I believe in managing new development in a way that welcomes new investments but also protects public assets and the investments that current residents and current property owners have made in the community. Change happens, and the city's comprehensive plan is supposed to guide that change. The city's zoning code is supposed to regulate that change, and the decision-makers are supposed to adhere, not blindly, but thoughtfully, to the plans and the regulations. And residents are supposed to be able to rely on the process, be part of the process, and know that their interests will be represented and respected. Thank you.
And last on this one is Bob Stewart.
I believe it's important to find a balance in managing these new housing developments. A number of properties in Edina are tired and do need some sort of refurbishment. The old Wicks Building on York, 7200 France, Pentagon Park, all come to mind. We want to create an environment in which property owners can and will invest in those properties to keep Edina healthy and vibrant. At the same time, we want to keep the city workable. France Avenue and York Avenue are already overstressed. Adding to the population density of that area will only exacerbate the overcrowding there at certain times of day. There are some things we can do to alleviate some of the stress. Among other things, continuing to improve our multimodal transportation options will help. So I believe thoughtful, nuanced approach to development is required. We want to invite continued investment and improvement in our properties, but it's vital that we keep Edina livable at the same time.
It was just brought to my attention. I skipped over Kia.
No problem. All right. I think I believe I bring a unique perspective as a resident of the Southdale neighborhood. I see that there are incentives to redevelopment, including the tax benefit. We all benefit from city turning underutilized property into redevelopment. For example, with the One Southdale Place, we went from $13,000 in tax revenue, or we will go from $13,000 in tax revenue to $152,000. We all benefit from that. But as has been stated, there is infrastructure capacity issues. I hope to bring my education and experience in strategic planning to look at the future of redevelopment in Edina and make sure that we have a proactive, community-driven approach so that we are not just reacting to developments as they come up forward. Thank you.
All right. We are off to, or onward towards, audience questions. And I'm going to do another housing one, seeing as we've been on that topic. I'm going to start with Jennifer Janovi. What can the city council do to comply with Edina's goal of increasing affordable housing in the city?
All right. Thank you for that question. So the Affordable Housing Task Force was about 10 years ago, and the comp plan, we're about, we're six years into the comp plan, and we haven't made a lot of progress on reaching the affordable housing goals that are in the comp plan, which were lower than those that were in the task force report. I believe that affordable housing should be seamless, so you shouldn't know that it's affordable housing. It should be integrated in developments, or it could be integrated in our neighborhoods with land trust homes where the land is owned by a nonprofit, for example, and the homeowner owns the house, and you would never know it's affordable. So it fits into our community really well. What can we do? Some options include looking at mandatory inclusionary zoning for new development so that there is no discussion about whether or not the affordable units will be included. They have to be like in quality and size. And we can also look at providing more opportunities for single-family homeownership. Thank you.
Bob Stewart is next. And again, what can the city council do to comply with Edina's goal of increasing affordable housing in the city?
We very much want to have more affordable housing in the city of Edina. We want to do that, though, in a way that does not adversely impact the values of other properties that are here. One of the ways to do it, and I spoke with former Mayor Meitzold about this, is negotiating, especially when there is a new multifamily unit going into the city. We can negotiate with the developers to have them include some units that are for affordable housing occupants, and then we can get that to be part of the plan for, on a project-by-project basis, part of the plan for improving our numbers on the single, on the units for affordable housing. So, thank you.
Kia Steele. Do you want me to repeat it, or?
Sure. That would be great.
What can the city council do to comply with Edina's goal of increasing affordable housing in the city?
Well, in addition to being unique in that I live in the Southdale neighborhood, I also live in affordable housing. In order to stay on the Edina Park Board, I had to find a place I could afford instead of living at my parents' house anymore. So our goal is, from the Met Council, is 212 units, and looking at the projects that the city council has approved, we are on track towards meeting that goal. But I think that we can look at, what can we do in affordable housing unique to Edina? My neighbors in the colony of Edina, some of them have moved from houses in Edina to condos because of medical reasons. I think we have a great medical district. Let's build off of that. We're going to have, we're going to need more senior housing in Edina, and I think we should look at opportunities that are unique to Edina, like those that really everyone in Edina can benefit from.
Kevin Staunton.
Thank you. I think the first thing to think about with affordable housing is remembering what the goal is here. I talk to a lot of people who are lamenting the fact that we have houses that are being torn down and replaced with very expensive houses. In affordable housing, we're looking for opportunities to allow young families, to allow schoolteachers, firefighters, nurses, people who work in our community to be able to live in our community. That gives them an investment in making our community as great a place as it has been and great again in the future. We have a good tradition of tackling this. The East Edina Housing Foundation has given out over 300 second mortgages that have helped people get into our community, and I can tell you stories about folks that have been able to stay in the community with second houses after that. It's important that we not tackle this by trying to depress the housing values. We love having increases in our property values. We just need to look for ways through things like the Edina Housing Foundation, as well as standards that can go along with planned unit developments and other zoning that can require developers to engage on that front as well.
All right. And Josh Sprague.
You know, I talked about this the night we approved the Beacon Project, and I think it was a watershed moment, the Beacon Project, all of the outpouring of the conscientious and impassioned support for that project is why we're talking about this this evening. But what I said was, we need to put our money where our mouth is, and affordable housing doesn't just happen. The city needs to be a participant from a funding perspective. We now, because of new legislation, we now have amassed money in Southdale TIF II District that we can use to, towards affordable housing projects, and we should. And we also just learned about another million dollars in excess revenue that's going to come out of the 7,500 York development that's going to be available as a pool of money as well. We should be looking for quality developers, people like Beacon, who know how to manage affordable housing well and have good relationships in the communities in which they serve, and we should also make it a point to look at public and private projects together.
Thank you. Onto a new question, and Kia Steele will be the first person to answer this. This is kind of going back to your, in a way, some of your, what you said in your opening statements, but you may want to amplify. What qualifications do you have to be elected, and maybe some of your skills?
I believe I have a trifecta in that I have the education and professional experience, as well as past leadership in Edina with the Edina Park Board, and then simply listening to Edina residents and working with them to make projects happen that we can be proud of. And I really underscore that part. I've worked at the state Capitol, and working with constituents is what makes or breaks projects. Getting their input and listening so that you learn all sides of the issues is very important to me. I worked for a senate district that was 75,000 people, so I'm ready for Edina, and I'm ready to be responsive and really listen to you. I think that's what's going to make or break the difference between Edina City Council member. Thank you.
Josh Sprague. What qualifications do you have to be elected, or special skills?
The, when I, when I came onto the council, one of the things I worked on immediately inside City Hall was how we made decisions and trying to be more strategic as a council and with our board and commission structure. So being strategic and thinking long-term is essential to doing this job well. You have to be able to build consensus. You have to be a creative thinker. I believe I have those attributes. And the way that I build consensus and talk to people is through a newsletter I send out after every council meeting to about 650 constituents. I use that as my think tank to bounce ideas off of constituents and get a conversation going, a dialogue. If you're a good communicator and you know how to have constructive dialogue with the public, you're going to get the best ideas that you can then go ahead and implement, and you're going to have the best observations about what's going on on the ground, and that's one of my fortes.
All right. Kevin Staunton.
Thank you. I think I bring a couple of things to the table that make me, make me qualified for the city council. First, I have the experience and knowledge to be effective on the city council. I've spent nine years on the Planning Commission, the last two as chair. At the Planning Commission, we are the only commission that deals with what we call quasi-judicial decision-making, considering applications that come in front of us and actually deciding whether to grant them or not and deciding whether to put conditions on them. It's a large part of what the council does, and I'm prepared to do that. Secondly, I am, in my day job, I'm a city attorney. For the last 18 years, I've worked with the city of Excelsior advising the city council and the planning commission and the staff in Excelsior, and so I know how to work with staff, I know how to work with the city council. Secondly, I would say that I bring a consensus-building track record that is really necessary on the city council. Through my work on the Grand View process and my work on the Planning Commission, I have demonstrated the ability to both listen to folks and then pivot to actual leading. Thank you.
Calling on Bob Stewart next.
I'm an energetic and active member of this community and have been for a long time. I've attended most of the city council meetings for more than four years now. In my daily work, I advise businesses on strategy. I work with boards of directors on providing direction and leadership to their companies or organizations. These are the very things that city council should be doing in governing the city of Edina. Furthermore, I'm an accountant. I have deep experience in financial matters. These are important skills for properly governing and overseeing the business of the city, and I think of myself as an empathetic listener. I always work hard to understand the points of view of others, and I have a collaborative work style that lends itself well toward getting things done. Thank you.
And on to Jennifer Janovi.
Thank you. I've also been involved for a number of years in the community. My education background, I have a master's in writing. When I got interested in nonprofit management, I did the mini MBA in nonprofit management at St. Thomas, and I completed the training more recently to be a qualified neutral, also known as a mediator. So, let's see. I have, in my city work, my volunteer work for the city, I've written city code, I've written city council resolutions, I've written city policy. I've been active on the Transportation Commission and a number of other committees. Transportation and traffic is a quality of life issue today, and it will be tomorrow. So it's critical to have somebody on the council who understands traffic and transportation for our community. I listen, I bring people together, I'm dedicated, I'm hardworking, and I think that covers it. Thank you.
Okay. We are done with question number two from the audience. We have another one, and that is going to go to Jennifer, first of all. What is your position on the city selling public land? As an example, the former public worksite, Grand View.
Well, that's a really easy one. I don't support it. I co-chaired the most recent Grand View community advisory team and was with the majority of the committee in supporting defining a public use for that property before going forward with selecting a development partner. We don't get our public land back if we sell it, and we're a fully-developed community. And as our population grows, as it will, we'll need more places for people to come together, we'll need more open space, we'll need more parks, and so I think it's critical that we keep this asset and not think short-term. In terms of selling other public land, my instinct will always In terms of selling other public land, my instinct will always be to preserve it. And that's consistent with the comprehensive plan, which talks about not selling parkland or open space. In fact, the comp plan talks about buying more parkland and open space if it becomes available. And there is a plot of land that's available in northeast Edina and I hope the city considers buying that. Thank you.
Bob Stewart.
I think public land is a precious thing and we should be very careful about allowing it to be privatized and used for private development. So my bias is largely in favor of holding on to those properties on behalf of the people of the city of Edina. And we should try to use, we do have a wonderful opportunity in that Grand View area to use the tearing down of the Public Works Building to redevelop that area and to improve that whole area so that it's better for all of us. So I think there can be creative ways to use that public land in, for the good of all of us and we should incorporate that into that kind of a redevelopment there. Thank you.
Josh Sprague.
I wish I'd gone after you because I could have just said ditto, but I'll give my statement here. In our work session when we talked about our vision for Grand View, I was, and a member Bennett were alone in envisioning 80 to 100% of that land remain public. So it is a core value of mine to keep public land in the public trust in which it's held. That land, any public land, is a strategic asset for the city that can be used for the betterment of the residents, of the owners, which is all of us. Grand View could be used towards health, wellness, connection, youth development, many, many different things. And that's why we need to hang on to those strategic assets. It's also a core value of our city. Look at the survey that came out of Grand View. It said, value statements, 61% responded, "Do not sell public land." 58% said, "The value is greater than the revenue" and 66% said, "Retain it for public purposes only." That's the right way to go.
Thank you. Kia Steele.
Well, I'm a Parks and Rec gal, so if you give me a boulevard, I'll find a sport to play on it. I also am in support of keeping public land public, especially with the Grand View. One of the reasons I, well, I started championing this first strategic plan for Edina Park and Rec before the Grand View issue really came to the forefront. But I believe in getting the data on what residents need so that when we have opportunities with these, like these, we can use them and advocate for residents' needs. So with Grand View, people are interested in recreational opportunities and 72% are interested in arts and cultural heritage. And so we have a unique opportunity that we are not going to see maybe ever again. And I really look forward to working with the city council for our park and recreation opportunities on Grand View.
Thank you. Onto Kevin Staunton.
Thank you. As I've spent much of the last four years of my life chairing the first two phases of the Grand View redevelopment planning process. And I think that the question about whether we should retain Grand View entirely as public land is the wrong question. The question is, what do we want to happen in the future in that area and how do we leverage what we have to make sure we have an even better place? Josh, in fact, has said at council meetings that what we're looking for is a catalytic public process, a catalytic public place that will drive redevelopment of the surrounding private property. We have to look at that in a holistic context. You can't just say, "We're going to build across the whole land exclusively publicly" when the majority of people don't want their taxes to be raised any further to pay for that. Instead, we should be partnering, public-private partnerships to work to create the kind of place that we want for the future of Edina that will be innovative and that will be the next great place in Edina.
Thank you. I need the hat, please. We're going to have the lightning round. And I'm going to draw questions out. These are one-minute answers, or I mean, one sentence if possible. One sentence, one sentence.
Not a one-minute sentence.
Not a one-minute.
Just checking.
I think my teacher would call that a run-on sentence. That's not good. Okay, Josh, you are first. So, "Do you feel that the city's police force should reflect the diversity in the community?"
I think all of our departments should reflect the diversity in the community.
Bob Stewart. What multicultural event could the city sponsor?
The, the schools do a great job with some multicultural events, but the city itself, I think, could sponsor some international fair or something to encourage cultural, cross-cultural understanding.
Thank you. Kia Steele. Should the city of Edina offer a gathering space for teens?
Yes, I've advocated for this at the Fred Richards Park.
We are to Kevin Staunton. Should city council members be subject to term limits?
Not having been on the city council, I'm not ready to be term limited out. I think we have term limits and that's called voters and the voters get to decide how long we're in office.
And Jennifer Janovi gets the last question. Who should be responsible for the cost of upgrading water, sewer, and gas lines and roads in the city? One, one sentence?
Those are paid for in different ways right now and so to answer that question, one sentence is nearly impossible. And so I do want to, if I were elected, I would look at different ways of funding road reconstruction because that's what's on your 100% specialist test for the road reconstruction part right now. And I would work to change that.
Thank you. Now we'll return to the audience questions and each candidate will continue to have one minute to answer. This, oh, this is going to be for Kevin Staunton, first of all. What is your opinion on the Met Council's Thrive MSP 2040 as it relates to Edina?
Well, we work hand-in-hand with the Met Council in thinking about how the, what direction we're headed as a community. I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to participate in the kickoff meeting of Edina's Vision 240, 2040, which replaces, which will replace Vision 2020. And really, it's about thinking about the future and thinking long-term. We do a lot of things on the city council about dealing with current crises, but our main job is to look long-term. And as we look long-term, we need to think about ourselves in terms of whether we're going to be inward-looking or outward-looking. I'd like to see us be collaborating with neighbors and be outward-looking and whether we're going to stay the same in terms of our infrastructure or whether we're going to redevelop that. And I'd like to see us redevelop and move forward toward the future.
Next up is Kia Steele. What is your opinion on the Met Council's Thrive MSP 2040 as it relates to Edina?
I'll be honest that I'm unfamiliar with the specifics of the proposal, but that being said, working with regional partners to make sure that Minnesota is a great place to come to, also working with the school district and other, you know, key stakeholders around Edina will be key to our future. And so, again, taking a proactive, strategic look at where we're headed and making the investments necessary to get there.
Bob Stewart.
All of us had the chance to participate in the Vision Edina process a couple of weeks ago and it was really a good step to try to think ahead to what can the city be like? What might the changes be in the world and in Minnesota? And how do we anticipate and meet those changes to keep Edina the wonderful place to live that it is? So we do need to collaborate again with the Met Council and with other regional partners to build a common vision and to create an Edina that's going to work for us for a long, long time to come. Thank you.
Jennifer Janovi.
So I've been appointed by the Metropolitan Council to the Transportation Advisory Board a couple of times and Thrive MSP, I have had some introduction to it through transportation. And it's the long-range vision for our seven-county metro area. And I believe that from that, some of the sub-plans will be developed. And in transportation, there are so many plans and so many acronyms that it gets very confusing. We have to do every 10 years a comprehensive plan and submit that to the Metropolitan Council. And so our city's comprehensive plan will have to be consistent in ways with the seven-county metro Thrive 2040, right, MSP vision. So I also participated in the visioning thing last year and, or last couple of weeks ago and welcome the idea that we're doing this long-range visioning because I think our plans should all flow from our vision. And so, thank you.
All right, and we have Josh Sprague to answer this now.
Regionalism is, is the wave of the future. People aren't operating in silos anymore and Edina can't either. We need to be collaborative with entities like the Met Council and we need to be aware of their vision for the future and how we fit into it. They, one of the documents I saw, I believe it came out of the Thrive 2040, was something about affordable housing and the different approach to it in the future. And it's something that in practice, we've all realized. And it's increasing the percentage of median income from 60% or 50% to 80% and then having different tiers of income housing that is part of the affordable housing plan. So in other words, workforce housing, 80% of median income could qualify for certain grants in the future. That seems right to me. 60, 80% is the next tier and then 60% below is the next tier. Different needs for the different tiers and I think it's a smart approach.
Okay, on to a new question. And Josh, you're going to get the first one. What is your vision for the redevelopment of the Fred Richards Golf Course property on Pentagon Park?
Why are you laughing? That was the majority of council that made the decision. But, anyway, you know what? Some community needs have not been met in that area for a long time and it's the park lawn neighborhoods' needs. We did a pathway before the whole Fred Richards decision came up, a connector pathway to serve both the local residents on the Cornelia side and the park lawn residents and the children trying to get to school. They still need a park. They still need a neighborhood park. They haven't had one and they've been deprived and it's not right. So we need to make that right somehow within the space. But the rest of the space is so beautiful, I don't think we need to overprogram it. I think the master plan headed towards most of it being passive is the right direction. It's a chance for us to go out into one of the most beautiful pieces of land and enjoy nature and relax and take a break. And that's as important as programmed uses in our parks.
Thank you. Kevin, your vision for the redevelopment of the Fred Richards Golf Course?
Well, I think the redevelopment of the Fred Richards space is going to start with the redevelopment of the relationship with the folks who are around the Fred Richards space. I think we didn't do as well as we could have in engaging those folks in the decision about how we were going to transition that space to a new space. And I think as we're trying to figure that out, what we need to be doing is asking them. And we need to be asking people around the entire community how we're going to do that and have a collaborative effort that moves forward. We've had a good, we've done a good job of doing that in other places, whether it be Grand View or whether it be residential redevelopment or whether it be the Valley View and Wooddale process. And I'd like to see us kind of tackle that for the Fred Richards space so that we're back to a kind of collaborative approach to figuring out the future. And I think once everybody gets on the same page, we'll have much more success in moving forward.
Thank you. Jennifer Janovi.
Thanks for that question. So to me, it's not about my vision, it's about our vision. And I personally want my vision to be informed by a variety of different points of view. So in the last question, we talked about vision and the city is doing a update to Vision 2020. So that's the master, you know, strategic vision for the city. And to me, you do that first and then you do the Parks Master Plan and then, and you identify needs and then you do something like decide what to do with the golf courses or any of our other facilities. So to me, the whole thing is out of order. I, I think, I think that's enough.
Bob Stewart.
That, the Fred Richards Golf Course space should, needs to be, remain an asset for all 48,000 residents of Edina. We need to keep that as a benefit for everyone in this community. I want to echo what Jennifer and Kevin suggested, which is, we want to engage with the people who are interested in how to use that property among our citizens to figure out the right way to use it. And we want to make sure that it gets used as a, as a resource in trust for everybody in Edina. Thank you.
And Kia Steele.
So in voting on the Fred Richards, I wanted to make sure that neighbors would retain their property values when the, when it was changed to a park. And I believe that we're going to do that. We're going to look at the visioning feedback at the Edina Park Board on Monday and I look forward to really integrating feedback and making sure that residents' questions are answered and, but I believe that there's a unique opportunity with the Nine Mile Regional Trail going through that park that will boost property values. We've seen it time and time again in studies. And one of the ideas I did propose that I would love resident feedback on was because of the unique connection to the Nine Mile Regional Trail was having, turning that clubhouse, part of the clubhouse into a bike repair shop for teenagers in Edina so that they could bike from the high school to the repair shop, work on bikes, learn skills, potentially work on bikes and receive a bike if they didn't have one.
Thank you. We'll be on to a new topic having to do with airplane noise and Bob Stewart's going to get the first chance at this. What action should the Edina City Council take in regard to the proposed new flight plan for the Minneapolis-St. Paul International Airport and the resultant airplane noise?
I believe air traffic noise is inevitable for communities that live near major metropolitan airports, but the proposed ARNAV system will concentrate air traffic over three major air lanes, two of which cross right over Edina. I do not believe that any one community should bear the burden of a disproportionately large share of the air traffic noise when there's no evidence of any improvement in air safety that would result from the new system. So it seems only fair to me that the burden of air traffic noise should be shared by all the communities surrounding the airport and I believe a state-of-the-art system could do that easily while still optimizing air traffic safety.
Thank you. Kia Steele is going to answer that next. Do you want me to repeat it or anything?
Got it. I too believe that communities should share the airport noise. I want to commend Joni Bennett on her, for her service on working on this issue. And really, it's going to take all of us in this room to advocate and be heard, which means that city communication is going to be very key, although it's not solely a city issue. Keeping residents informed and letting them know what they can do so that we are heard as a community will be very important.
Thank you. Jennifer Janovi.
Thank you. I'm so glad that this issue is on the city's radar screen now and I'm thankful to the residents who brought it forward. I live in northeast Edina under, under the airplanes and I know what a quality of life issue it is and I believe- is, and I believe it's a health issue. If RNAV gets instituted, I would be concerned about some places being the haves and the have-nots. And the have-nots are under the tracks. So what can the city council do specifically? I'm thankful that they are doing what they are doing. We had this past month or so ago, a two-week noise monitoring tower in Edina, at least one, I think. And that was the result of Edina's advocacy. When data is gathered, we're better able to make the case of what kind of impact this is having on us. And so I think we have to continue to keep that seat on the NOC, or the Noise Oversight Committee. And by the way, Edina shares a seat with, I think, eight other communities, and we have to keep working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Sprague.
I live in the Cornelia neighborhood, and we've had, from 30L, which has received or had flights shifted, 12,000 flights shifted over to its direction. It's been a very serious issue for us in the southeast quadrant. What the answer is, is advocacy. And thank you to the residents that got this on the table originally. We were not well notified, and without their help and their lobbying, we would not have had a seat at the table. So now, going forward, we have to advocate at a federal level when the FAA reauthorization bill comes up, to make sure that RNAV is implemented in a context-sensitive way, which means that they are aware of high-density residential areas around airports like Minneapolis and do a better job in spreading out the load of the traffic and not concentrating it. We also need to advocate through our state representatives to better use the state regional airport system and better distribute the local flights around the state to reduce the burden on all of us.
Kevin Staunton, you are the last one on this question.
Thank you. I think this is a good example of the value of collaboration and of being in partnership with our neighboring cities and with our region and how important it is for us to be working together toward the future. A single city like Edina working against the FAA on an issue like this isn't going to be very effective. We need to continue to collaborate with Richfield, Minneapolis, with our neighbors, with our state representatives, and importantly, with the Minneapolis Airports Commission. They are really the most effective advocate with the FAA as we seek to make sure that there's fairness in the way the noise is distributed from this regional asset.
Okay, we'll do one last audience question before the wrap-up. And I'm going to call on Jennifer Janovi to do this first. How do you define conflict of interest? And under what circumstances do you believe a council member should recuse herself or himself from a decision-making process?
All right, I can't write that fast, so I wasn't done writing that down.
Conflict of interest, I think, is the basic theme.
All right, so the law is the basement, not the ceiling. And to qualify as a conflict of interest under the law, you have to have pretty much a direct financial gain. And what passes people's smell test is a much lesser level of conflict of interest. As part of the Morningside Neighborhood Association, I brought forward a pretty complete conflict of interest policy for our group. I developed board and commission bylaws that then were revised and used for all boards and commissions, and that included a conflict of interest statement. I believe the council should have a conflict of interest policy that is aligned with our community standards, and I think we have high standards.
Thank you. Bob Stewart.
I agree with Jennifer's initial statement. The law is the floor, not the ceiling. So we can hold ourselves to a high standard in serving the community, and should. And we need to be self-aware about both what is the actual conflict and what is the perception of potential conflict. So we need to, I think, be very vigilant that public servants are in fact serving the public and not, there can't be any suggestion they're serving their own interests. So we can do this. I think it has to do with a mindset about whose interests are you really working for. Thank you.
Kia Steele.
If there is any perceived public conflict, a conflict of interest, I would recuse myself immediately. I've worked at the State Capitol, I think that's enough said. I've seen plenty examples of conflict of interest and what happens to them, even if it's perceived conflict of interest, and I have nothing to do with it. So I believe that residents come first, and I want to serve you and make you proud.
Kevin Staunton.
I think the important point here is making sure we have confidence in the decisions that the council makes. When folks come to council meetings, they need to have the feeling that there's honest decisions to be made, that they're made transparently and that there aren't any other influences at work. As a member of the Planning Commission, as Chair of the Planning Commission, we adopted a few years ago a policy that says that on development applications, we don't have one-on-one communication with anyone who's interested, whether that be residents or developers or the like. And while I'm not suggesting that that is necessarily what the councils should do, I do think we have to be thinking of ways to reassure everyone who's watching that we haven't made a decision until we've heard all of the information on the topic. And we need to be very careful about public statements we make until we've heard everything, and then we can make a decision that people will have confidence in.
Thank you. And Josh Sprague.
We should have an ethics policy that covers conflict of interest, as has been mentioned here, the direct financial benefit, real or perceived, but also the other ethical dilemmas that come up in public service, whether it's gifts or bias that you were just referring to or something else. The Planning Commission was looking at this issue recently, and my suggestion was to make a citywide policy, conflict of interest policy, really an ethics code for the city. We can use League of Minnesota Cities' resources. They have a template code of conduct and a model statement of values. That's a starting point. I also suggested a city of brainard policy, which was what was being looked at, and that's been derived from those League of Minnesota City documents and is a good place. But whatever we end up with, the objectives, the standards should be objective and clear. And we should have a conversation with the public about it so they understand as well.
Thank you very much. We are nearing the end. We'd like to hear one last time from each of the candidates with a one-minute closing remarks. And we'll be doing that in the reverse order of which they gave their opening statements. So that means we start with Kia Steele.
Well, thank you again to the League of Women Voters and thank you all for being here tonight or watching on TV or online. I hope that you've heard from about 80% of the questions that proactive strategic planning is what our city is really going to need to succeed in the future. As a park board member, I saw the need and lack of a strategic plan in park and recreation. And what that means is that we didn't have the data on what citizens want. We didn't have a needs assessment for our department. And in addition, we didn't have long-term planning for our finances. So I hope to bring those skills to the city council in transportation and redevelopment and many other areas and work with you so that our plans that we execute and implement effectively reflect your values. So thank you again for being here tonight, and I hope that I can talk to you in person soon.
So Kevin Staunton is next.
Thanks to the League for hosting this event and to my fellow candidates. We are certainly fortunate to have so many capable people willing to serve our community. As you think about how to choose among us, I encourage you to consider two characteristics that I think set me apart from my fellow candidates. First, I am prepared to be effective as a city council member on day one. My nine years as a planning commissioner and 18 years as a city attorney give me the experience and knowledge to both plan for our future and work effectively with our city staff to convert those plans to reality. Second, I have a proven track record of being able to both listen and lead. As Chair of the Grandview Planning Process and the Planning Commission, I have demonstrated an ability to build consensus among divergent points of view, just the kind of skill that we need on the city council. We've been fortunate to have a great tradition of leadership in our town. I'd be honored to be part of continuing that tradition. I hope I can earn your vote on November 4th.
Josh Sprague.
A former president once said, "We must accommodate changing times, but cling to principles that never change." As we look forward to a future that is in many respects already here, we too will have to cling to the principles that have brought us this far, to stewardship of our financial and natural resources, to collaboration with our many committed residents, and to innovation where we honor our tradition as a land of firsts and take an active role in shaping our future, rather than allowing our future to shape us. I thank you all, each and every person in the audience tonight, all those tuning into this broadcast, and to my fellow candidates for your inspiring dedication to making Edina an exceptional place to live. We have made much progress in four short years, but there's more to do. We need your talent, energy, and ideas to continue the forward momentum. With that in mind, I respectfully ask for your vote on November 4th so that together we can keep building a healthy, vibrant, and sustainable 21st century city. Thank you.
Very good. Jennifer Janovi.
Thank you. Thank you again to League of Women Voters, Edina, for hosting this forum and to all of you for your questions and for listening so attentively. If I haven't answered your questions, please contact me. I'd be happy to talk with you. In fact, I'd like to talk with you. Edina is a great community. It's a community worth working hard for, and that's what I've done for the better part of a decade. I believe in Edina, and I'm dedicated to building the future of this community based upon its strengths. I'm hardworking, I bring people together, I solve complex issues, and I have the experience, but most importantly, I listen. When listening to people, when I'm out talking to people, they talk about the community of Edina with deep affection and respect. But when they talk about the city of Edina, what happens here at City Hall, it's a little bit different. They don't always see themselves, they don't see the community necessarily reflected in what happens here. So I want to change that, and I have the experience and the dedication and the drive to do it. So thank you very much.
And Bob Stewart.
Thank you to the League, the audience, and the other candidates. Edina is a remarkable community. We have great neighborhoods and great people. I believe that continuing Edina's tradition of quality and excellence will serve us well as we look to the future. Edina's changing. We are now more diverse, and we're adapting to changes taking place in Minnesota and in the world. This is all good. While with the right city leadership, we can keep Edina a preeminent community, a great place in which to live, work, and raise our children. I'm not a representative of just one neighborhood or one type of citizen. I want to work for all of Edina. I believe in the philosophy of servant leadership, which is the idea that those who lead best are those who serve others. I want to ensure that all of us have a voice in the decisions of Edina's city government. I hope you will give me a chance to serve all of you. I ask for your support and that you vote for Bob Stewart for city council. Thank you.
Well, with that, that concludes our forum for the evening. I'd like to thank the candidates for participating and for their willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Edina for sponsoring this forum. This forum has been taped for broadcast on Edina Community Channel 16 and will be shown on Monday at 9:00 p.m., Tuesdays at 5:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m., Thursday at 9:00 p.m., and Fridays at 5:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. through November 4th. So if you know people that weren't able to be here tonight, invite them to watch. The forum will also be available for viewing on the internet through the city of Edina, Thank you for attending tonight's forum. Please remember to vote on Tuesday, November 4th. Good evening.